Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, March 9th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. Members of the public can attend in person or watch or listen to the meeting live on Channel 4, or by going to LHCAZ.gov/TV. Our members of the public can submit written comments for Call to the Public and public hearing items by emailing thecityclerk@LHCAZ.gov at least an hour prior to the meeting. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Andrew Cave of Lamb of God Lutheran Church. Welcome Pastor.
The Apostle Paul writes in First Timothy, "First of all then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth." Let us pray. Oh Lord our God, through your holy scriptures you have commanded us to pray for our leaders, so that we may live a quiet and dignified life. We pray for these, your servants. Grant them wisdom, grant them courage, grant them to know that you have established them in their positions of authority, and grant that they may lead and guide us in accordance with your holy will. This we pray in the name of your Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
And we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Sunrise Rotary Club, and we have the President Nikki Nichol. Come right up to the mic. Yes, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Nikki, welcome. If you'd like to share a little bit about the Sunrise Rotary Club with us. Is the green light on?
Oh, there it is.
Okay, perfect.
Hi. Hi, my name is Nikki Nichol, and I am the current President of Sunrise Rotary, one of three Rotary groups in Lake Havasu City. We are the smallest group, but we're the group of what we call Dewers. And I know that we have a lot of other Rotarians in this room, including some sitting on City Council. So we are all Rotarians. It is an international group. We do a lot for the community, and we are looking to continue to do more. Unfortunately, with the cancellation of Balloon Fest this year and a couple other fundraisers. We're getting innovative though. So we're doing something called the Butterfly Project, so keep an eye out for that within the community. And we are looking to host a socially-distanced Easter egg hunt this year for the community like we have in the past. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you Nikki. Item four on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Hi.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenny Koch.
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is the Call to the Public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. If you'd like to do so, there is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. You do not have to sign up for Call to the Public, but we did have one sign up, so we'll start there. And then anyone else that would like to speak to the council just come up to the microphone, state your name for the record for the clerk, and then state your comments. So we'll start with Christine, welcome. Just signed up today. Yeah, not always the only one, but welcome.
Hello, hello Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having us. And the first agenda on my list to talk to you about is I want to thank you all for allowing citizens to come before you and talk about issues and concerns we have. And your public option for my organization POD has given us so much feedback and so much attention, and we couldn't have done it without this opportunity. So I want to thank you all for that. Just want to share this. POD, my organization Protect Our Desert, started over a year ago just by neighbors in the Equestrian area that were so up to here with Tannerite and terrorizing our animals and the destruction of our desert. So we thought, let's do an education program, let's have a big cleanup, and we did. We had last March a huge, successful cleanup, and we're doing it again this March. And we're encouraging Rotarians, come and join us. Let's see, I had it all written down here. Our neighbors had a petition for the town, ninety signatures, actually ninety-nine signatures, about banning Tannerite. And you know Apache Junction did. They banned Tannerite in their city because of the noise and the disruption of it. And I know people in all areas of Havasu, not just our area, are hearing it. And I know the Chief of Police is doing his best to, with his decimal machine, to record decibels, but I don't know if he's had a chance to record the decibels of Tannerite. I really feel Tannerite should be sold with a warning label, like my wine and my vodka comes with a warning label. Just saying, you know, people need to know there's a thousand dollar fine if you blow it up in our deserts. And there's no warning label. And actually, it started fires in California, huge destruction. And that's why it's a thousand dollar fine here. So Tannerite needs to be explored. It's a binary exploding target that people love to shoot and have fun seeing it explode. You can buy one pound, five pound, ten pound, forty pounds. And you know what? Your friend can be right behind you and buy forty pounds. And then you can blow up a Bronco. How fun is that? Yeah, but anyway, just saying, please, let's think about banning Tannerite. Also, there is no shooting on state lands, and people don't know, there's no signs out in their desert that this is state land, this is BLM land. You can get the Avenza app on your phone. It lets you know, oops, I'm on state land, oops, I'm on BLM land. So please get the Avenza app on your phone.
Yeah, thank you Christine, your three minutes.
I'm over.
Yes, you are over. Yeah, and just for the record, you've mentioned a few times that Apache Junction has banned Tannerite, and we've researched it and they have not. So Maricopa County, Pima County, or...
Is that fake news?
Fake news. Yeah, so, but we do track down what people mention, so just since you've mentioned it a few times.
I will have to research that, thank you sir.
You're welcome, yes, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council during Call to the Public? Yes, please, just make ready the microphone, state your name for the record. Welcome.
Good evening, Audi Collins. Some of you might know me, been around a few days. I just want to thank everybody. Last time I was here was right before Halloween, and I mentioned to close the street for the children. Thank you guys. It was a great event. The children were all safe, and they were protected from the traffic and everything. Thank you guys very much, the City Council, the Police Department. Now, getting back to events on Main Street, we had one recently. COVID, I get it. We need to get events back on Main Street if we possibly can. In two weeks, I think the state of Arizona is going to be in a different world. I think the government might lift some more of the restrictions, I'm hoping. St. Patty Day is coming up, you know what happens then? Vodka, whiskey, great weekend. Please, Desert Storm, the biggest event of the year for Main Street. I've had lunch with a couple of the other businesses, and we would all appreciate it if you guys can do your due diligence and let's get Desert Storm on this map. Let's get it on the map, let's try to make money, more money for Main Street, more money for the City of Lake Havasu, and bring some of the business back. And I appreciate it. We need new police cars, so we need new police cars, and we need more events on Main Street. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council during the Call to the Public? All right, we'll go ahead and close the in-person Call to the Public, and we have not received any comments prior to this meeting to be read into the record for the public. I hear, the public records, or, excuse me, the Call to the Public, so we'll go ahead and close that as well. Moving on to item six, which is the Consent Agenda. Would any member of the council like to remove anything for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Koch.
Motion?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven, Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is announced vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, four regular members, and three alternate members. There's also one student member on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start this evening's report with a celebration of a hundredth birthday for one of our residents here in Lake Havasu City. Jean Grancy Butterworth, born on March 5th, 1921 in Rochester, New York, moved to Lake Havasu City in 2001 to be closer to her family. Grancy has three children, five grandchildren, seven great-grandchildren, and three great-great-grandchildren. She turned one hundred years old on March 5th and celebrated with close family and friends. And on Saturday, March 6th, a vehicle parade in her honor, along with a proclamation proclaiming Jean Grancy Butterworth Day in Lake Havasu City was presented to her by you, Mayor Sheehy. So happy birthday, Grancy. I'd like to congratulate our Parks and Recreation Department for earning recognition by Tree City USA again for nineteen years in a row. Under Field Supervisor Greg Geary, our Parks Crew takes great pride in maintaining over 6,000 trees in Lake Havasu City and does an excellent job beautifying our community. In the photo is Park Maintenance Lead Andrew Means. He's holding a proclamation presented to him from Mayor Sheehy from earlier in 2020, recognizing Arbor Day. In honor of our National Employee Appreciation Day, Mayor, you proclaimed March 5th, 2021 as Lake Havasu City Employee Appreciation Day with an announcement and presentation at last Friday's coffee with the mayor and city manager. Accepting the proclamation were members from our Employee Appreciation Committee, representing all of our employees here at Lake Havasu City. They do a fantastic job with identifying ways of appreciating our employees, and that's all their ideas, and we're very proud of them and appreciate them every single day, especially for stepping up and uniting us this past year with urgency and resolve to adopt, respond, and provide critical services to our residents and visitors with little or no interruption. This year, the Lake Havasu City Police Department's NOVA Program held graduation ceremonies a little bit differently. They were held at individual schools rather than one large ceremony. This year, there were 388 fifth-grade students that graduated, representing all six Lake Havasu School District Elementary Schools, as well as Telus and our Havasu Preparatory Academy. The SA winner this year went to Telus, and the Rocket winner went to Starline Elementary. The NOVA Program stands for nurturing opportunities, values, and accountability, and is taught to all of our fifth graders, seventh graders, and ninth graders by our uniformed officers representing the Lake Havasu City Police Department. Hopefully next year we can get back to that large celebration. Our Havasu Youth Advisory Council is hosting Operation Restock the Food Bank. It is a drive-through collection event at the Havasu Community Health Foundation. It's food bank, which is located at 1980 Kiowa Boulevard North. This event will be on March 7th from 9:00 a.m. till noon. All are invited to join our Hayek kids in donating canned food items to individuals and families in need by dropping off at their drive-through event. Simply pack your trunk with the food donations, pull into the drive-through, pop the trunk, and our Hayek representatives will do the rest. All non-perishable donations are welcome, but special requests this month are for canned meat, canned fruits and vegetables, canned beans and chili, canned tomatoes, pastas, sauces, soups and crackers, peanut butter, and cereal. So let's get out there and show them how to support the food bank. As of March 8th, there have been 106 new cases since my last report to you, Mayor and Council. You can see some of the breakdown represented month by month in the graphic shown. And of course, this information is provided to us by the Mojave County Public Health Department. Currently, there are 45 active cases of COVID in Lake Havasu City. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, renters and landlords in 12 Arizona counties, including Mojave County, are now able to apply for Emergency Rental Assistance, able to apply for Emergency Rental Assistance Program, or ERAP. Please contact the Arizona Department of Economic Security for more information if assistance for you or somebody you know might be needed. And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Are there any questions? Can you say the date again for the drive-through food drive? I believe it's March 27th.
Yeah.
Okay, March 27th for that date.
Did I say something different?
We heard March 7th, is I think what we heard.
Oh, I'm sorry. So yeah, thank you, Mayor. Saturday, March 7th. March, I did it again. Saturday, March 27th, from 9:00 a.m. till noon. It's good to have friends, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. All right, we'll move on to item eight on our agenda, which is our public hearings. The first item is 8.1, Discussion and Possible Action if necessary to comply with open, excuse me, with Arizona Open Meeting Law, following the executive session regarding the annual evaluation process of the city magistrate, the city manager, and the city attorney. We did discuss the evaluation of the city manager, city attorney, and city magistrate, and the process that we'll use, and there is no need for a motion at this time. So this is a public hearing, and so I do need to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And there is no motion at this time, but we will have a subsequent meeting and subsequent action in front of this council in the coming weeks. Moving on to item 8.2 is adopt notice of intent to increase water and wastewater rates and charges and establish May 11th, 2021, as the date for the public hearing regarding the proposed rate increases in conformity with state law. Mr. Kozlowski.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is to set a 60-day notice of intent in order to hold a public hearing on May 11th. Prior to today, city staff and our consultants have been meeting with the public and holding three public meetings to provide those options to them and gather their feedback. With that, Kevin Burnett is here today with Wildin Financial Services to provide a similar presentation to the council and talk a little bit about that feedback. And with that, I'll turn it over to him.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you.
Yes.
I should mention Pat Walker's with us too. She's on Zoom, so she's going to be listening in, listening in and chime in if I go astray at all with this. So I think the last time we met with you all, we had about 90 slides or so that we wanted to get through, so we've significantly cut it down since then, whittled it down some, but we still have a lot of information. Some of it will be refresher for you, and then some of it, we have some new information to share with you as well, so we'll jump right in. So just as a reminder, the purpose of the rate study, so we want to make sure that your water and sewer utilities have the revenue necessary to cover your operations and maintenance expenses on an annual basis, as well as fund your capital program. The capital program was put together by city staff, so we want to make sure that we've got the funding levels needed to take care of all that. We've got two targets that we need to meet on an annual basis, the minimum reserve level requirements and legal debt service coverage, which I'll get into briefly in a little bit. And then we also worked through a process with staff to find out, what are your primary objectives? What are you trying to achieve through your water and sewer rates right now? And the top two objectives that staff wanted to see was revenue stability as number one and conservation on the water side, not so much on the sewer side. So those were the two primary objectives, that is, we were designing the rates for consideration, that we took those objectives into consideration. So we want to touch on the financial plans a little bit. So as part of this process, we developed financial plans for a 10-year planning horizon. So we've got rates and financial plans going out 10 years. They're based on the best available information that we have today. Assumptions are going to change going forward. We know that the further we get away from today, the murkier our crystal ball gets, but we use the best information that we have today to develop those plans. At the same time, at the end of the process, we're going to be delivering our models to city staff so that they can maintain and update them going forward, so that as these assumptions do change, whether it be growth, revenues, customer usage patterns, all that stuff, they can incorporate it into the models and get real-time updates of where they're at and where we're tracking. The final bullet here, this is something that has come up since Pat and I met with you earlier this year, and one of the things that we've been discussing with staff is the idea of not implementing rates on July 1 every year going forward. That's our target for this year, but going forward, July and August tend to be your biggest usage months, your highest water usage months. So that's when your bills, monthly bills are going to be highest to begin with, so adding on a rate increase to the two months when you have your highest water usage may not be the best approach to take. So we're looking at potentially going with a September 1st date so that we avoid those two highest peak usage months. With that being said, there is some other considerations that we have to take into account with that. So in real simplistic terms, if we assume that we need to get 5% more revenue during the year, if we implement it in July 1, we can raise all rates by 5%, we'll hit our target. If we decide we want to do it January 1st instead, so we'll have six months under the old rates, six months under new rates, in order to generate that same 5% revenue, we would have to raise rates 10% January 1st, because we've only got six months under that higher rate scenario. So with a September 1st, you're looking at about 83% of the year, so it's going to have some kind of an impact later on down the line, not in the immediate future, not for the next couple of years. It was more in the outer years, 2026, I think, is when we started to see a bit of a change. So that was something that we wanted to look at and share with you all to make sure you were aware of, of one of the other options that we were looking at at this point. So with that, we're moving into water. So just as a refresher, the last study was done in 2008 with the last increase coming into effect in 2009. So you've gone a fairly significant period without a rate increase. During that same time, your costs have gone up. CPI goes up, construction costs go up. And without the revenue increases, expenses are expected to exceed revenues by about $7 million a year going forward for the next several years. So basically, what that means is the status quo continuing on as we have been, that it's just not sustainable in the future. So we need additional revenue in part to overcome the loss of the IDD property tax. So that generates about $5.7 million right now, so that's going away. Bear in mind, the overall excess of expenses over revenues is $7 million. So even if we kept that $5.7 million in IDD revenue, we'd still be falling about $1,003 short every year with our expenses. So we've got that, as I said, the increasing operational costs. Greg needs to repair and maintain the system on an annual basis. And then we've got those reserve targets that we talked about. So the first one is a city policy. It's not a legal requirement, but it's good financial practices. And what that is, is the city wants to have reserves equivalent to 15% of a five-year rolling average of your revenues. So that's just making sure that you have money in the bank to pay your bills in case it's a drought year and you're not generating the revenue that you'd expect, or that there's some catastrophe, a water main breaks, anything like that, something that's not expected in Greg's capital plan. There's money available there to take care of those unexpected costs. The second target is a debt service coverage. So this is a legal requirement that you have to meet every year. The reserve target, you want to maintain it every year, but if you happen to slip for a year, two years, it's not going to be the end of the world. The debt service coverage, this is something that you do have to meet every year. So as you issued debt, you made a promise to your bondholders that you would have $1.20 in net revenues, so revenues less your operating expenses, available to cover every dollar of debt you have outstanding for that year, whatever your debt service payment is that year. It doesn't mean you're going to pay 120% of your debt service that year, just that you have enough money to cover 120% of your debt service coverage. So that's a legal requirement, and then the city again has a policy of 1.5 times. So that's best financial practices. It shows the bondholders you're serious about this, you take it seriously, so that if you do go out for bonds or debt in the future, you're a better financial position, and you can get lower interest rates, which will save the utilities customers money going forward. So with that, we're going to move into the two options. I think we showed you four before. We whittled it down to two, got some feedback from the public on these two options. So we've got an option A and an option B. So option A, we're attempting to achieve the goal of revenue stability. Both of these options are going to meet that, although option A does a better job, in our opinion, of maintaining that revenue stability. It's the stronger revenue stability option of the two. This one also tries to address the goal of conservation, and we're trying to provide greater equity between those customers who are inside the IDD and outside the IDD. So with that, we've got, these are the monthly base charges under option A. So you can see currently there's an inside rate, inside IDD, and an outside IDD rate. The reason for the differential right now is those customers inside the IDD are paying that property tax. So the outside rate is higher to compensate for the fact that those customers aren't paying that IDD tax into the system. Going forward, once that IDD tax goes away, we're proposing everybody be charged the same amount every month. So this is the monthly base charge that you pay regardless of how much water you use. So that's what gets us to our revenue stability. So the increase from 5.16 or 6.45 up to $9.02 a month. That provides the extra stability in part for the utility. So next, we've got the single-family volume rates. So again, currently, there's an inside IDD rate and an outside. We're proposing going forward to be one rate for all customers. And you can see, we played around with the usage threshold. So currently, you get 0 to 1,300 cubic feet a month. That's proposed to go from 0 to 1,000 going forward, and we've also adjusted the pricing within those tiers as well. So we took a similar approach here for multifamily and commercial. So we've got the, again, one consolidated rate for all customers going forward, and then the different rates. And then we've got single-family irrigation and other irrigation. Again, one set rate for all customers regardless of location, and we've also changed the tiers a little bit here as well, as well as the pricing. And then we've got RV parks, so there's, and all of these are based on cost of service. So we went in and looked, did an analysis to see how much does it cost to serve the single-family class? How much does it cost to serve the RV park class? How much does it cost to serve irrigation customers? So all of these rates that I'm sharing with you are based on that cost-of-service analysis, so that each customer class is paying its proportionate share. So moving into option B, so again, we're achieving the goal of revenue stability, and we're trying to do conservation. But then this one also took an attempt to benefit the lower-volume users. So in this case, we're providing an allotment of water in the base charge, similar to what you've got in your current sewer rate structure, where you pay that monthly charge every month, and then it's going to include a certain amount of water. So here we have, it's the same base charge as we saw before, the $9.02, so it's an increase of where you're at today. But as I mentioned, for residential customers, it does include an allotment of water here. So as you can see here, we've still got four tiers that we're proposing, but that first tier is 0 to 500 cubic feet a month. You'll see a zero there, so that first 500 cubic feet of water is included in the base charge every month. So you'll pay $9.02 a month whether you use no water or up to 500 cubic feet that month. And then we've got the higher rates as you move through the tiers there. So while we had the option A and option B for residential, option A and option B is the same for multifamily, commercial, and all the other customer classes. We only have one rate structure for all of them. So we wanted to provide some sample bills for you here. So the main takeaway on this is if we were to do an across-the-board rate increase, everybody's bill would go up by the same amount every month if they use the same amount of water as they had previously. Because we changed the rate structure around a little bit, we've got some different options, everybody's going to see a slightly different impact to their bill. Some might see it go up, some might see it go down. Some might see it go up, some might see it go down. It depends what your meter size is, where you're located and how much water you use. So first we've got a, a single family rate comparison. So the first grouping we've got here would be a low volume user using seven hundred and ninety-six cubic feet a month. So the, the purple on the left would be the current bill at fifteen dollars and ninety-one cents. Under option A, it'd be sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Option B would be a little bit lower at fourteen dollars and eighteen cents. So you can see you get a little bit more revenue stability from option A there. And then the, the lighter purple, I'm not really sure what color to call that, at the far end. That's where we took a look and we said, you haven't raised your rate since two thousand and nine. Assuming we had raised our rates by the rate of consumer price index every year since two thousand and nine, what would that bill be today? So in this case, it would be nineteen dollars and forty-six cents if you took your current rate structure and just adjusted it for inflation every year. Moving into the mid user at twenty-eight sixty-six cubic feet a month. Again, you can see fifty-one seventy-four would be what they're at today. Under option A, fifty-four ninety, option B, fifty twenty-three, and with inflation sixty-three dollars, a little over sixty-three dollars. Until we get to the high user at the end, you can see there again, a hundred and twenty-three dollars for current, hundred and eighteen under option A. A hundred and twelve under option B and then a hundred and fifty-one. With inflation. So we also looked at some non-residential comparisons here. So we've got a bar in the first case at three thousand one hundred and twenty-three cubic feet a month. So you can see what it would be under the current proposed and with inflation. The same, another bar for the second middle there. And then the church, library, theater, park at the end there. And then we rounded that out with two hotel comparisons. So a hotel at fifty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five cubic feet. And then a hotel at twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy. So you can see again how the bills would stack up. Current proposed and, and with inflation. Next, we're going to move into the comparison to our neighbors. We provided this disclaimer last time we met. This is something that every time Pat and I presented a council, this is one of the must answer questions that we get. Which we're happy to do, but at the same time, we always have to caveat it that. The rates that we've developed are specific to Lake Havasu in this case. They're based on Lake Havasu City's costs, Lake Havasu City's geography. The way their system is run here, we don't know if your neighbors are running their systems to fail. They're not reinvesting at the same rate you are. What the differences are. So. The point being, you can't get an exact apples to apples comparison, but at the same time, we want to see how we stack up with, with our comparables. So here we are. So right now you've got Lake Havasu City, second from the bottom on the list here at seven dollars, seventeen dollars and thirty-one cents for an average customer. Option A is just going to be a little bit higher than that, option B a little bit lower. But at the same time, regardless of which of those options we were to go with, you're going to be in the same general position as you are today compared to the rest of your neighbors. So with that, we're through water. So do you want me to keep plugging away through sewer or do you want to take a stop and discuss water?
Any council members have any questions specific to water? We, we can ask questions at the end as well. Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Yeah, it might, might make it easier for the public if we do water and do water questions. On slide number twenty there, I use a comparison of seven hundred and ninety-six cubic feet per month. There you go. Seven hundred and ninety-six cubic feet per month for a single family water, low user. Is that the average that, that? Did you have found that the people?
The nine forty-five that, on the slide that we were just on. So that would be somebody a little bit less than average.
Okay. That was, that was the next question. The nine forty-five, that's the average?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you happen to, I, I know there's been slides in some of the public meetings and some of the other meetings we've been at of how many of our citizens fall into? To average, do you happen to have that with you?
I've got how many fall into each tier? I don't have how many are at the average, but I can get that.
Okay. Yeah, I know it just would be helpful for, so even by tier, since that's the information we have, if you do have that. Just to give our citizens at home and those in the audience, just kind of a perspective of what that looks like.
Yeah. So under your current rate structure, the zero to thirteen hundred. That's about forty-nine percent of your customers' use right now. Tier two, the thirteen hundred and one to twenty-five hundred, that would represent about twenty-eight percent of water use. Tier three is at fifteen percent of water use. And then you've got eight percent of customers would be in that upper tier. For the modified option for option A. Tier one, the zero to thousand would be thirty-seven percent of customers would fall under that water use. Tier two captures another thirty-nine percent of water use. Tier three at nineteen percent of water use. And then tier four is five percent. And then if I move forward to option B. So tier one, at, at the zero dollar rate, so what's included in the, in the base charge, that would be about seven percent. Of your water use falls into that tier. The five hundred and one to four thousand, that jumps up to seventy-eight percent of water use would be in that tier. Fourteen percent in the four thousand to ten thousand range, and then one percent would fall in the over ten thousand range.
Yeah. So in the, in option B, seventy-four percent of all of our users are getting a decrease in their rate if that happened in the option, just to, just to put it in perspective for what we're talking about. Yeah, excellent. Thank you. Any other water questions?
I, I had one more question. Just, we're talking cubic feet of water, which most people don't understand. How much water is that? Can you kind of extrapolate that out to how many gallons that is? So? People have a, more of an understanding of how much water they're actually using.
Sure. So. A hundred cubic feet would be about seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. So one cubic foot would be seven point four eight gallons. If that helps.
Great. Councilmember Dolan?
Yeah, I guess my concern was when we talked about at the retreat was, I like the idea of the. Having a, an option where there was a minimum. So when you pay your bill, you get a minimum of five hundred and it's equal to, you know, it, it's good for our, our low use, volume users that have been here. Full-time residents, it helps them with consistency, but. We talk about, you know, we have a lot of second homes here that, you know, maybe. Aren't here for a lot of months and then they come in and they use the system and they use it a lot and that, that maybe that we. Make them pay a little bit more of a fair share where no matter if they use it or not, everybody's paying, we're assuming that everyone's at least paying for five hundred cubic feet a month. Where this way, it looks like we're giving them that first five hundred cubic feet because it's free, but then the meter rate stays the same. I guess that was my concern was, I thought we were going to. Include that in there. So. There's an incentive for, you know, just because they're not using it, they're still paying for upkeep of the system and.
Right. And that, and that is something that we went back and we revisited since then. Part of the difficulty in the balancing act that we have is the higher we make that base charge. The more impact it has on the lower volume users. Their proportionate cost goes up more significantly when we increase the base charge. So we were trying to do that balancing act as you were saying, well, if we. Increase the base charge then to make it more. How can we do that and still not impact those lower volume users and, and take away from the objective that we're trying to achieve by including that? That amount in there. So as we looked at it, if we increase the base charge, then we would have to try and increase that five hundred to something higher. In order to benefit those low volume users because we are increasing their, their base charge. And we got into that issue again where now you're giving that much more free water to people who aren't here. As opposed to the people that are here. So we were trying to figure out a, a way to balance it and. We couldn't legally say, well, you can have that five hundred cubic feet in your base charge if you happen to live here, but if you don't live here. So we ran into that issue as well. So we did try and, and address that concern, but. We couldn't really come up with any good way that's going to alleviate what we, what we already had, unfortunately.
Councilmember Campbell?
Um, yes. What is the percentage of vacant homes up? Like, they're only here for three to four months out of the year. I know we had this number out on the table at one time or another.
I believe Mr. Knutson has that from some census data.
Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, I don't know how the census defines it, but I know according to the last census, the most current census data that we have, which is. Old, it's not the twenty twenty data, is about, about a third of our residential properties are classified as, as vacant properties. That, that's a lot. So about, about thirty, thirty-three thousand households in Lake Havasu City. And, and about eleven thousand of those are considered vacant by, by the census. But I don't know the definition of like how many months that that is. So.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for. And I do think it's really important that all the infrastructure that we have to pay for on a daily basis. Is not sustainable with just being used three months out of the year or four months out of the year. So. I'm leaning towards that option B personally.
Any other questions, comments on water? All right. So we'll go on to the next half.
All right. Moving into sewer then. So we've got the sim, similar approach on sewer. Why do we need to generate additional sewer revenue? So in this case, expenses are expected to outpace revenues by about three million dollars a year on average going forward. We have the same revenue needs going forward, the increasing operational costs. Greg needs to repair and maintain the system. We've got that same fifteen percent rolling average. To make sure that we've got that reserve fund available in case something happens unexpectedly. And then we've got those debt service coverage targets there again as well. So again, we have two options to present on, on sewer. The first one being a stability and simplification option. So in terms of revenue stability, we're proposing a flat residential rate. Right now you've got a ra, a, a monthly base charge that includes an allotment of water. And then it's based on your average winter consumption. So. There's a little bit more volatility, if you will, with that rate structure than. Knowing what your flat rate's going to be every month. It's good for financial planning purposes. Staff knows how much money they're going to be taking in every month. It's easier for them to plan and. Take care of some of the expenses that they need to take care of. The simplification piece, well, the flat residential rate is a simplification. It's more geared towards the, the non-residential customers where right now you have a multitude of different customer classes. You've got laundromats, you've got restaurants, hotels, bars, any number. So we're consolidating a lot of those customer classes. So it's easier to understand. It's easier to figure out what your customer is going to fall into in terms of those customer classes. And then another new thing, the bottom point there, which we haven't touched on before. In keeping in line with the revenue stability and I think. And partly in line with what council member Dolan was asking about, we're proposing to do away with the policy of a reduced rate for months of no usage. So your vacation homes, where currently they're getting a discount if they don't have any, any sewer flows in that month. They get a discount on what they have to charge. And that may be a good policy to have. In dealing with those customers, but from a revenue stability standpoint, our debt service doesn't decrease because somebody's not living there and not using it. The operational costs don't decrease. Some of them will decrease, but staff still needs to be there to monitor the system. Greg's staff still needs to be there to maintain the system. That doesn't go away just because somebody's not there for, for a few months. So we're proposing to do away with that. With that current policy that's in place. So you would be paying the same flat residential month as everybody else. Regardless of whether or not you're there or you're vacationing. Or you're using it as a vacation home rather. So with that, the, the option A residential rates, we've got the current is based, as I said, a monthly base charge and then a flow rate. Which includes your first five hundred and sixty-two cubic feet of flow. We're proposing to go with a strictly fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. So it doesn't matter. How much flow you have, we're doing away with the average winter consumption, which I know people find confusing. So that would go away in this case. And then we looked at the cost of service again for all the other customer classes here as well. So multifamily, we've updated their rates based on their cost of service. And then you can see the different customer classes. We've got a general commercial industrial class now. The RV park class, the hotel and septic haulers, we're proposing to, to remain, but they've all been updated based on what the cost to serve each of those customer classes is. So option B, we, we've termed as a modified current. So it's maintaining the, the same philosophy of your current rate structure where it's a monthly base charge that includes a certain amount of minimum flow. And then everything above that would be charged at, at a flow based rate. Where it's, as it's five hundred and sixty-two today, we're proposing that be reduced to five hundred. In talking with staff, they bill in round numbers, so they don't have the ability easily to bill at five hundred and sixty-two. They would be billing at five hundred or six hundred, not. Five hundred and sixty-two. The other thing that we're doing here is we're getting away with, with, from the. The average winter consumption process on this one too. So it would be based on your water flows every month. With that being said, we know that water flows in the summer are going to be significantly higher than they are in the, in, in the winter. So we looked at what the average flows were in the winter and that was about seven hundred and fifty cubic feet a month. So what we said in this case is you're going to have five hundred cubic feet included in your base charge. And we will cap whatever your sewer flows are, water flows are at seven hundred and fifty. So if you go up to nine hundred cubic feet, we're going to assume that additional hundred and fifty cubic feet is for irrigation, it's for filling the pool, it's for washing the car. It's not going into the sewer system. You shouldn't be charged for it. So at the same time, you've got a little bit of a window between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty. So you've got about two hundred and fifty cubic feet a month that you could potentially. Be charged for. So it's not going to be as revenue stable as option A. Cause you're going to have a little bit of variability in there. The other thing that we're proposing on this one is, again with option B as it was with option A, we're proposing to do away with the. Discounted rate for no use for the same reasons we had under option A. The costs don't go down because you don't happen to be here. You'll have some costs will go down, electricity, some chemical costs maybe, but the bulk of the city's costs are going to be the same. Regardless of whether or not the system's being used. So that's what we have in this case here. So this is the residential charge. So the monthly base charge would go from forty-one dollars a month up to fifty-two dollars and fourteen cents. Again, providing the revenue stability there. But then the flow rate is going to be going down from seven thirty to a dollar seventy-six. So, and, and again, that two hundred and fifty cubic feet a month swing is where the usage will fall. And then the same as, as water, there's only, there's only one option for. The non-single family customers. So option A and option B is going to be the same for all of these customer classes here. So looking at a single family sewer rate comparison, so again, we've got a low user, a mid user and a higher user. So the, the darker purple on the left is going to be what the bill is today. So somebody using five hundred cubic feet in the low example would be paying forty-one dollars, just the base charge. Under the flat rate, they would go up to fifty-four twenty-five. They'd be at fifty-two fourteen under option B. And then again, the lighter blu, lighter purple is. Taking your existing rate structure and applying inflation to it, what would it be? So you can see. As we move through the, the low user, the mid user and the high user, the current bill fluctuates a fair bit. But because we've got that revenue stability and in one case we've got a flat rate charge and in the other case, just that two hundred and fifty cubic foot swing that I was talking about, there's far less volatility between these three. Rate profiles on the single family side. We did the same thing on the non-residential side. So again, our two bars, the bar with higher usage, a bar with lower usage. The church, the library, theater. And then the, the two hotels, the, the larger hotel usage and the lower hotel usage. So you can see where they would stack up. Current proposed and with inflation. We have the same kind of caveats on the sewer side in terms of doing the comparison to our neighbors. But with that being said, so your current rate for, for an average customer at fifty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. You're in the upper half of your comparison neighbors there. The option A would be a little bit lower at fifty-four twenty-five. Option B a little bit higher at fifty-six fifty-four. But again, right in that same general area that you were at before. And then. The highest rate of all would be if you took your current rates and applied the CPI to it since rates were last raised. But that's not where we're at. So. The next steps, we are proposing to have a public hearing at a council meeting on May eleventh. With new rates going into effect July one of. with new rates going into effect July 1 of 2021, assuming that they are adopted at that May 11th meeting. So I kind of skipped over questions on sewer. So if we do have sewer questions, try and address them.
Great. Any questions on sewer?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
I have a question. Could we go back a couple of slides to the RV parks and the hotels?
The rates?
Yeah. I'm still a little confused why the hotel is charged per room, but the RV park is charged one flat rate. You think volume-wise, a toilet at an RV park is still going to be, it's still same two, four people staying there. It just seems like we're, I don't know.
So the, well, the RV park, so that's a rate per spot.
That is, that is per spot.
It's per spot.
Okay. So it's not total. Okay. That was just a question I had even at the retreat too. Okay.
Sure. I should have been more clear on that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions on sewer? All right. So the the one part we talked about, but the ADD is kind of what drove this whole utility rate study in the first place. The expiration of the irrigation and drainage district, which was the first like quasi-government that McCullough set up way back in the 60s. It was set to expire in 1978 with the vote of the people to incorporate Lake Havasu City, but could not do that without expiring its debt. So its debt's getting ready to expire, which means the ADD is going to go away. So that $5.7 million that's identified here will be a property tax savings on your property tax bill that you see currently is the ADD tax. So that that'll come off and then in its replacement would be these costs here. So kind of just the perspective of why we're doing this, why now and where it goes. So again, the action in front of council tonight is to adopt a notice to increase the water and wastewater rates just to conform with state law. We will have another public hearing on May 11th to discuss this further. This comes on the heels of already having discussions during our work session and then we had public community meetings a couple of weeks ago, three of them on a Friday afternoon that we got great feedback from citizens. But we still encourage folks to get involved. Any questions of council before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I don't have a question. I just want to make a statement in case anybody wants to come up and speak and for those that are listening on TV. The thing about this water and wastewater system that we have here, you all own it. It's owned by the city. It's your system. It's your freshwater system. It's your sewer system. You pay for it. Right now, through your property taxes, the ADD that the mayor was just speaking of, that pays for a big portion of the maintenance and costs and we've invested millions of dollars into this system. So with that said, it is your system. So what we're looking at here is we want feedback from the public and what you believe is the best way for you all to pay for your system. It's a, it's a rate. We don't make profit off of this. At the end of the day, if it costs a hundred dollars to work the freshwater and wastewater system, we need to get a hundred dollars so that we can maintain your system. So that's all we're looking at. So like I said, we're nonprofit. We break even at the end of the day. So we just want to know what you all think is the best options for you. And we have this public hearing on May 11th and then here again tonight. So we'd love to hear from all of you on what you think. And thank you for the presentation. You've made it very clear, I think, for people to understand.
Thank you.
All right. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please just come up to the podium, state your name for the record. Good evening and welcome.
Hi, my name's Gary Brock. I need clarification on option B on the sewer. It was $1.76 if you went over the 500 up to the 750. That's 250 gallons times $1.76 means your bill could go up by $440 in one month. If you go over that 500, go all the way up to the cap. That seems rather expensive compared to option A. My preference, based on what I understand, unless I get clarification that I'm wrong here, would be option A. Totally option A, a flat rate of 50 something dollars a month. Call it good.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Mr. Burnett, did you want to address?
I think I can clarify that too. It did show that the max it maxed out was 56.54 when he showed it. So it's like a to go from 500, correct me if I'm wrong, to go from 500 to 750 at the max was a $2.29 increase.
Yes, my apologies. So when I was so that flow rate, the $1.76, that's per 100 cubic feet. So the max that you could pay would be two and a half times $1.76. It's not $1.76 per cubic feet. I should have been more clear on that. My apologies.
Could we go back to the sample page for sewer B? The, what it did to the bills and the yeah, because I think it shows mid-user option B is 54.56, 50, it maxes out at 56.54, which is 2.29.
Correct.
Which is not two and a half times $1.79.
So it should be the
Is it per 200? I don't know, just because we're going from 500 to 750, there's 250 that we're paying for, but it goes up $2.29 within that range.
I'll double check my math.
Okay. Because yeah, just it shows that max is out here at 56.54. Just to make sure I understood it right correctly. So.
Yeah. Do you understand the question?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. Does the rest of the council understand what, so from you're talking 500 to 750, it should be $1.76 times two and a half max, right? And so it'd be a whole dive. Oh, you have it. We have Pat.
Mr. Mayor, I think is, did I hear Pat? Did I hear you on the Zoom call? If not, I apologize.
No, I'm waiting for, I'm here, but I'm waiting for Kevin to come back with the calculation. I think the 56.54 is correct, but Kevin, you're doing the calculation now, right?
No, I'm not. I don't have my computer or calculator in front of me.
Oh, okay. So you want me to do the calculation?
Counsel's nodding yes, if you could.
Yeah, if you can just clarify that so everyone understands it and can have discussions over the next two months before May 11th.
Right. And so it's $1.76 per $100 cubic feet, right, Kevin?
100 cubic feet, yeah.
100 cubic feet times two is $1.76 times two? So you're adding $3.52 to the bill?
It'd be two and a half because there's that extra, it's from 500 to 750. So two plus an extra half.
Okay.
So $4.40.
So $4.40?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm looking for that page plus what the prior
$4.40 on top of the 52.14 would get us to 56.54.
Right, right.
Okay. I did do the math right.
Yep, he did.
Oh, I was taking it off the option A actually is what it was. So that was the difference. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
I could have been wrong. So I appreciate you bringing it up.
No, yeah, it's good to
It's a $4, $4 instead of 400.
Exactly.
A lot more zeros were added there. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Mr. Brock, does that clarify your question? Okay, great. All right, we still are in the public hearing. Would anyone else like to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And again, we did not receive any written comment for any of our items this evening. So bring it back to the council. Again, we're talking about the notice to intend to conform with state law. On our agenda item, I'll bring it back to council for discussion or a possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
I move to adopt the notice of intent to increase water and wastewater rates and charges and establish May 11th, 2021 as the date for the public hearing regarding the proposed rate increases in conformity with state law.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Burnett and Ms. Walker for being here this evening. Moving on to item 8.3 is adopt resolution number 21-3483, appointing an alternate member to the Lake Havasu City Airport Advisory Board. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and city council, the city received one application requesting consideration for appointment as an alternate pilot member to the airport advisory board. This appointment is necessary to fill the vacancy of an alternate pilot member with a term ending June 30th, 2023. Mr. Jeffrey Anderson's application was in your packet and I believe he's also in attendance today to make a brief presentation to council and answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Anderson? Hi, welcome. If you could just introduce yourself and tell us why you wanted to be an alternate?
Perfect. My name is Jeff Anderson. I'm a full-time resident here in Lake Havasu City. Moved here with my family back in 2011. Actually started flying and did my pilot's license here locally back in 2016. So I've had the pleasure of using the wonderful assets that we have here at the Lake Havasu City Airport. Business background, I am an executive at a medical device company. A lot of lots, over 30 years in executive management type of experience and looking to share some of that experience in helping to advise the airport manager and with interest in seeing the airport grow.
Excellent.
Be happy to answer any questions if there were any questions.
Oh, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions? All right. Well, thank you for, yeah, thank you for applying. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council.
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Coke?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution number 21-3483, appointing Jeffrey Anderson as an alternate pilot member to the airport advisory board with a term ending June 30th, 2023.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Coke and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any further discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Anderson for volunteering. We appreciate it. Item 8.4 is award the bid for a customized conversion of one fire department 2021 Ford F-59 Step Van to quality vans and specialty vehicles. Chief Plafis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I came to the council January 12th of 2021 to purchase the chassis and the box for the CERT vehicle. This is the second half of this and this is the final step to convert the rig. It's a customization of the equipment that needed for CERT for this vehicle. We went out for invitation of bid. We opened bids on February 10th, 2021 for the customization. We had two bids that were submitted that met our specification. The lowest bid was $62,722.81 with the highest bid of $69,234.28. Our recommendation is go with the lowest bid at the $62,000 and $722.81. And this will complete the CERT vehicle and our estimated date of arrival for that will probably be late September, October. So if I can answer any questions, I'd be more than happy to.
There are any questions of the chief? And again, the CERT vehicle that we currently have is over 30 years old. It was repurposed from its original use to even be a CERT vehicle. And CERT provides thousands of hours of volunteer services to rehab our firefighters when needed, police officers when needed, and also help with all our special events. Most of our citizens can see him around town in the green, bright green shirts, helping, helping out. So we appreciate them and we need to give them the right tools. So.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Mayor?
Councilmember Campbell, yes?
Motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. We have to, oh, any other questions or comments? And then we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
I was excited.
You're, we're coming right back to you. It looks like there is no public comment on this item. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Councilmember Campbell?
I'm excited to motion. I move to award the bid for the customization conversion of one fire department 2021 Ford F-59 Step Van to quality vans and specialty vehicles in the amount of $62,722.81.
So I can Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.5 is approve the purchase of four police patrol vehicles from Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford. Chief Doyle?
Mayor Council, I am seeking your approval to, under Plan B items, to purchase four patrol vehicles. It's for a total amount of $231,788.40. And again, that's under the cooperative purchase agreement through Santan Ford.
Excellent. Thank you. And for those watching in the audience, Plan B is in this year of a really awkward budget. We weren't really sure what revenues we're going to do, but they are healthy at this point and able to get through some of these necessary items that we need for our team and for our citizens. So. Any comments or questions from council for the chief? Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Are these police cars going to need to go through the same type of refurb or, you know, outfitting process? Or is this, is that $230,000 roughly out the door completely ready to go?
Yes, that's a fully rigged patrol vehicle.
Cool. Thank you.
And I would mention that this is a replacement that we are replacing for patrol vehicles with these.
How old are the vehicles you're replacing?
So one is a 2008 Ford Crown Victoria that vehicle maintenance already took out of the fleet because of mechanical issues with 112,000 miles. One is a 2013 Ford Explorer with 142,000 miles. And one is another 2013 Ford Explorer with 136,000 miles. And one is a 2017 Ford Explorer that was damaged in an accident and totaled.
Any other questions or comments for the chief? Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, just, just a comment when it comes to emergency vehicles, because we were asking about mileage. One thing that some people may not realize is on these emergency vehicles, whether they're police or fire, when they respond to an incident, you can't just go by vehicle mileage because they don't turn the vehicles off because of all the emergency equipment that's in those vehicles. It would kill a battery within 15 minutes. Then they're calling for AAA to come give them a jump start so they can keep going. I won't tell you how I know that, but you can't turn your car off and leave all your emergency equipment on. So there's, you may only have 100,000 miles on it, but you can have twice that amount of time just from the vehicle running and idling in emergency scenes.
And that is correct. You're welcome.
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council.
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
I'll motion. I move to approve the purchase of four police patrol vehicles from Santan Auto Partners LLC, DBA Santan Ford in the amount of $231,788.40, utilizing the cooperative purchase agreement 2464.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Moses and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. All right, moving on to item 8.6 is approve a cooperative purchase of a 2021 Caterpillar 926M wheel loader from Empire Southwest LLC, DBA Empire Machinery. Mr. Frosley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have four loaders in our fleet currently that are similar to this one. They, they range in age from 14 years old to 17 years old. The purchase that we're asking for approval with tonight will replace the 17-year-old loader that is currently out of our fleet. It's been experiencing a lot of maintenance issues. To date, we've spent $132,000 just maintaining this one to keep it in service. And it's currently out of the fleet because it's having some problems with the hydraulic system, which would put it over the cost that we're asking for, for the new one, actually. So we use these loaders every day on, on every street project we do, every wash project we do. We use them to clear the roads after heavy rain. So they're very, very popular. And this one has actually been denied several years in the past. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Frosley? Councilmember Moses?
Did you say that the upkeep on this has been $132,000?
To date, over the last 17 years, correct. Last year, we put a $10,000, $10,000 or $12,000 rear axle in it.
I just want to say that I reached out to my husband and said, okay, they want a new loader. Do they need one? He said, yes, they need one. So there you go, everybody. Chip said it's okay.
And any other questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Seeing them, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve the cooperative purchase of a two thousand and twenty-one Caterpillar nine two-six M wheel loader through Empire Southwest LLC, DBA Empire Machinery in the amount of a hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, utilizing the cooperative purchase agreement two, six, eight, six.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing them, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to our final public hearing of the evening. Item eight point seven is approve funding agreement with Golay Havasu for the promotion of tourism on behalf of the city. Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It was about thirty days ago or one month ago, back on February ninth, we had a conversation about the, the contract with, between Lake Havasu City and Golay Havasu. I got my marching order since that meeting, which was for me to bring it, bring a revised contract back to, to council on, on the March ninth date. So that, that is being presented to you this, this evening. You'll see a lot of similarities between the, the contract that we talked about one month ago and this one with, with three key differences. So one you'll see here is that the, the term represents here is it's a three-year term. You're seeing that we're looking at quarterly reports are being required of Golay Havasu to the, to Lake Havasu City. Monthly payments are still part of the, part of the process. And at the last meeting, we talked about a couple of different options that included percentage of percentage in terms of those payments. This, this approach is, is much more simplified and is in concert with the approach that we have, the city's contract that we have with the partnership for economic development. So this, this contract represents a one point six million dollar payment from Lake Havasu City to Golay Havasu to invest in, in, in the promotion of tourism activities that, that draws more tourists to, to Lake Havasu City. Again, this is a performance-based contract. And I talk about the example of the scenario where a resident will come and talk to somebody at the city, whether it's the mayor, councilmember, city staff, and they'll say, how much is the city spending on tourism promotion? And, and what's that look like? Well, this contract spells it out to the, to the T. In this case, again, Lake Havasu City would pay one point six million dollars for tourism activities, and the contract spells out what we get in return for, for the, for those dollars. So with that, I, I do want to recognize that we have Chairman Don Callahan, Vice Chair Chip Shalovsky, and the President CEO is Terrence Concanon. And since the, the last meeting, this has been reviewed by the Golay Havasu Board and was approved. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Do any members of the council have any initial questions for Mr. Knutson?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Lane?
How did we come up with the one point six million?
The one point six million is a result of the dollars that are collected by the city in terms of the bed tax and the previous allocations to Golay Havasu in, in previous years. Again, if you take out twenty, the year twenty twenty, the last twelve months, I look at that as an anomaly in a COVID environment with California being shut down, Lake Tahoe, other tourism destinations in the area being shut down. So in the previous, previous, the years previous to that, the collections by Golay Havasu was just shy of one point nine million dollars. So, and, and based on that and the conversations that we had the last council meeting, one point six million dollars was, in my mind, a, a consensus of, to one degree or another, with, with the council members.
So the, we're setting this contract based upon how much tax revenue is generated, not on how much it actually costs to do the job.
So we've, we've asked questions in terms of like looking at the budgets, and we see what Golay Havasu does in terms of the, the funding for the activities that they do have. They have spent those dollars in the past, other than, other than the reserves that they have, they, they've kept. But yes, in terms of the dollars, I'm looking at what the funding was for the previous years outside of a COVID environment. And again, yeah, you're right, Councilmember Lane, that's based on the, the tax, tax collections, bed tax collections and restaurant and bar tax collections.
So a question for, for Mr. Concanon there, you know, for, I've been asking for numbers to, just exactly what it costs to, to market the city. What is our return on investment? I mentioned this at the last meeting. If we spend a million dollars and we get a ten million dollar return on that investment, I think that's absolutely wonderful. If we can prove that on paper, but if we spend two million dollars and we're only getting a one point one return on that, it's not worth those dollars. And so I've asked for some documentation on that, and I was told that I would receive it. I asked for it again at the council meeting thirty days ago, and to date, I still don't have any documentation whatsoever. So is that documentation coming? Is, did you just write me off and consider I was a lost cause? Or is there a reason that I don't have those numbers?
Okay, I believe Chairman Callahan, did you want to say a few words on behalf of, of Golay Havasu?
That's okay.
It's good to see you back in the chambers. Yes.
Yes, I'm Don, Don Callahan, Chairman of the Board of Golay Havasu. We have talked to several of you in the past couple of months. And just want to let you know that the money we spend is, for the most part, returned in, in greater value. And Mr. Concanon can give you a better number on that than I can right now. But we, we just want you to know that the amount that's being reduced, we can, we're going to have to live with, obviously. We can live with that, and we can still do a very reputable job for Lake Havasu City in getting people here and keeping people here. So whatever we, whatever we're, we're reducing by, we're going to make some adjustments to accommodate that. And I guess, Mr. Lane, if, if Mr. Concanon would like to come up and, and explain any of that, your question, he can do a better job of that than I can. But all in all, I think, I think the Bureau does a great job of spending your money. And, you know, we, in, in the times we're going through, rather than to take down welcome signs and reduce media exposure, that's, that's not where we want to be right now. But you have some?
If I may?
Mr. Do you have a question for Mr. Callahan or?
I do have a comment from Mr. Callahan. First, I just want to say, and Mr. Concanon can come up as well. But first of all, thank you for the job that you guys do. I truly appreciate the, the work that you do, and I don't want anybody to think that this is a personal issue with me or anything like that. I agree that you guys are marketing our city. What I just was asking for is the proof, the numbers. When a citizen calls me and says, where's the proof? You're saying that it costs one point six million dollars. Can you show me that? Why it costs that much money? I've had people that are in the business telling me that the city's being taken and that it, they should be spending about half the amount of money that we're spending. I don't know that. I don't know one way or another. I'm not in that business. I don't know what the dollar is. I just want to know what the return is on, on the investment and how we can prove that. One point six million dollars is a lot of money when you break that down amongst the, you know, we're looking at structural deficit and we're looking at, we have been delaying the purchase of police cars and that kind of stuff. But we're, we're marketing the city. We need to market the city. We are a tourist-driven economy. I just need the proof, and that's what I've been asking for, and I still don't have it. That's, that's my concern right now.
Fine. Mr. Concanon, you want to come up and?
Councilmember Lane, I apologize. It was my understanding, excuse me, my understanding that based on what I said before in our meetings with Jess, that you would have that information. I'm not saying Jess was supposed to get to that information. As I've stated before, and I will, I'll go back to my office immediately after this and send you the budget. It was my understanding that the city council has the budget. The city council has a representative that sits on our board. So it was my understanding that this information is getting back to you. But I will send it to you immediately after this meeting, but I will restate for the record that one, a little over one million, eighty-three thousand dollars was spent on marketing this year, in the previous year. And we got back around ninety-three million dollars in tourism revenue. But I will go to the office immediately and send you every single board member our current budget.
Thank you, Mr. Concanon. And any other questions or?
Any other questions?
I have a comment on that. Just to put it all in comparison, this is only one percent to the restaurant and tax and bar tax and three percent for the transient. And so we are, which is our hotel tax. So sometimes when people ask me, why are we spending all that money? And I lay it out that if you really think about it, bars and restaurants are only one percent, and we're into the two million dollar mark. That means you must be doing something really good, and our community is growing and thriving even during COVID. So I want to thank you very much for all you do, and I know the value that you have in your industry and what you do. Because I've been in the bar business, and I have used your websites over the years, and I've seen the events that you've pulled off and helped with. And being an event coordinator, I understand how much work that is. So again, unless you want to go to a comparison of other cities like Flagstaff or Tempe or, and see what they're spending on tourism, that would be, probably be a good comparison because we're doing it with our water rate studies and everything else. But to lay it out, one percent or three percent of all the hotel, that's not very much. Not to mention all the tips, tip money that they bring into the community, gas, fuels, and other things. So thank you for all you do.
And understand, please, that we, we only get seventy-five percent of that one percent. We don't get the whole thing.
Correct.
And only seventy-five percent of the three percent.
Correct. Job well done.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane.
Yeah, I don't know if you can answer this, like trying to foresee something, but do you see what you're going to be taking a little bit less than you have in the past, that you're going to have to cut anywhere?
We will. We'll have to reduce several things, probably. Looking at the various events that we support, have supported in the past with actual dollars, we'll probably be reducing some of those to begin with. And also looking at our staff to see if we can afford to cut any of our staff or any of the hours that they're working right now. So we'll look at all of those things. We know we have to cut something.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses, did you have? So yeah, for every, I reached out to the state agency too, just so we know. Kind of where that's at, for every dollar invested, it returned thirty dollars in, in state sales tax and tourism promotion. So return on investment is, is known. This model of using a percentage of bed tax and/or food and beverage taxes is not new. It's been used for, for many communities across the country. In fact, if you look at our council communication, the last, the last ordinances or measures were, start with a nine-six. That means it was nineteen ninety-six. It's the last time we talked about these. And these one percent food and beverage tax and the three percent bed tax were, were industry-driven. So we wouldn't even have access to the twenty-five percent if it wasn't for the industry that drove that. I look at tourism as an investment, an investment in economic development and tourism promotion that helps, helps grow our community and allows us to be able to have those acts, the access to those things. You know, the other thing we don't talk a whole lot about is we're focused right now on a three percent bed tax and a one percent food and beverage taxes. Is the two percent city sales tax that's generated based on all activities that, that occur out tourism and otherwise throughout the, the spectrum. I mean, so the, the, these are our big dollars, and, and we need to invest in tourism promotion. And, and yes, we'll, we'll feel the impact of, of, of any cuts to tourism promotion. And, you know, it's, right now, they're doing good work. And if it wasn't for tourism in this last year, we would have really been in a different position. And some of the council actions we took tonight would not have been able to occur with, with revenues that were coming through. So, so I'm disappointed in this generational shift that we're even talking about a fixed contract. But, but certainly I support economic development and tourism promotion, and this is one way to do that. So.
If I, if I may comment on that.
Yes.
I agree, though, the reason we have these things is because of tourism and, and the economic development that we've been doing and these taxes that are coming in. My question is, we're not basing the contract based on what it costs to develop or to promote the city. We're basing the, the contract on how much money we're bringing in. That just seems backwards to me. It should be, what does it cost to promote the city? That's what the contract will be for, and the leftover dollars, instead of them going to a private entity, are used by the city for tourism-related issues such as funding our city's staff, whether it's police, fire, the road departments, whoever, where we're paying overtime for these people to be out there on the street doing the job. So I'm not disputing the fact that, that they do a great job. I'm not disputing the fact that we need to have a company that, that does this. What I'm saying is, I don't like the process, the process of setting a contract based on how much money we have coming in, not how much money it actually takes to do the job.
My, I have a statement to that as well is, what was I gonna? Basically, we are going to be hurting the industries that have been hurt the worst through this COVID. That's what I feel like. I think we should be supporting our bars, restaurant, tourism after this pandemic. We don't know which way it's going. The last thing we need is other tourist industries pumping the budget in making tourism dollars go through the roof. And we're over here telling our hard-working bar and restaurant owners, this past year, you worked so hard, but now we're not going to market you as much as we had in the past because we talk about a structural deficit. But in the meantime, we've had all-time record-high revenues coming into the city. So I'm disappointed as well that we're discussing this right now, and I think it's horrible timing. And I would like to come back in a year and look at it again because I know you have some money in your reserve. The last thing I want to see you do is pump the brakes on not taking care of our bars, restaurants, and our hotels that so desperately. There are some out there that did extremely well, and there's some that are really hurting. So this whole discussion, I'm kind of with Mayor, that the timing is wrong.
I would agree with everything you just said, yes. And it's, what, what we're, what we're going to spend and what we do spend, what we have spent, Mr. Lane, what do you want it to be? What do you think it should be? What is, what is your research said it should be? I mean, we could spend five hundred thousand.
Oh, and, and I don't know the answer to that because I haven't been given the documentation on what it actually costs and what the return on investment is. I absolutely agree with Councilmember Campbell that what you guys are doing is extremely important. And I'm not saying cut back so that the hospitality industry here in Lake Havasu is hurting. What I'm saying is, let's justify the dollars that we're spending. Let's have the proof. Let's not just arbitrarily pick a number out of the sky and say, well, we're bringing in two point one million dollars, so let's give Golay Havasu one point six million dollars because that's a decrease of what they're already spending, and, and we have, we all have to cut back. That's not how I do business. And my job, I was elected by the people of Lake Havasu to watch every single tax dollar that goes through us. And these tax dollars have to be spent on tourism-related issues. And we will always spend these dollars on tax-related issues, or excuse me, on tourism-related issues. We're going to do that. We should do that. What I'm saying is, can we justify how much money we spend here, how much money we spend here, and how much money we spend here? I'm not trying to hurt any business in this town. I think it's, it's extremely important that we, that we advertise for our city and we bring tours here. But I also believe that we need to get the best bang for every single dollar that we have, and that's where I'm at.
Do you feel we have not been doing that?
Absolutely not. I think you guys are doing a great job. And I told you in the very beginning, I respect you and your staff and everything you guys are doing. I'm just asking for us to justify every dollar that we're spending by giving it to your agency to do the work that you're doing. And if we're, like I said in the beginning, if we're getting a ten million dollar investment return, and we can prove that on a million dollars, great. But if we're giving you one point five million dollars and we're only getting an eleven million dollar return, then we're not doing as well with that other million dollars or half a million dollars. You understand what I'm saying?
I understand, sure.
So that's, that's what I'm getting at is, at what point have we reached, I think Councilmember Moses said this, saturation? You know, and that's at the point when all the hotel rooms are full. Well, they seem to be full. So maybe we've reached that saturation point, and we don't need to market that money as much as we're doing, but to use those dollars for other ways of promoting tourism in the city. That's where, where I'm getting at.
Sure. With the, with the conversations that we've had with Mr. Knutson in preparing this, the presentation that he made to you tonight, I think there's all kinds of checkpoints in this operation now to make sure you are made aware of how we're spending our money and, and the return we're getting on.
And I think the, Mr. Concanon, you had mentioned, was it nearly a hundred million dollars and, and spend? Ninety-three million. So I mean, I would invest all day long, one point six million for ninety-three return. I'd do that every day.
So I'd love to get that too. I've never heard that number before. I haven't seen that number. That's what I'm getting at, is that number came up tonight. I hadn't heard that number last week. I haven't gotten the documentation that Mr. Concanon said he was going to get to me to. I haven't gotten the documentation that Mr. Concanon said he was going to get to me to show me that. I haven't seen that.
No, that, that's fair. That's, but you know, we just have to, we have to recognize as we're coming on the, the outset of this pandemic, if we don't have the money to invest in tourism promotion, it's, it has the potential to hurt, hurt our community. So, and, and what, what we have. So. All right. Any other questions of the council? Councilmember Dolan?
I have so many things. If we're going to do something, we need to do it right. And if we don't know what it costs to market Lake Havasu and we're just throwing money at the problem, I, I do have a lot of respect. Up until this last month, I have a lot of respect for what Go Lake Havasu has done. I was also very impressed what interagency did right before they shut down, where we were told how great they were, concerns were brought up, we were told everything's fine. And the next thing we know, oh whoops, they're not, they had a board that represents. And I know a lot of people that were on the board at the time. They're, the people, I'm on a lot of boards myself. And I take the fiduciary responsibility of that very seriously. And I think I've been very concerned about how this has all played out over the last month and a half. I'm not going to lie. A board that approved a 1.9 million dollar contract with the city, never read it. It wasn't in the room. I was told that didn't happen. I read in the newspaper that did happen. We give $250,000 to events. The newspaper, I don't know where that money goes. The newspaper was all over us when we gave two and a half million dollars in CARES money to businesses to keep them afloat and Havasu. Oh, we have to show where all that money goes. We, well, we were keeping, we were paying directly bills to keep businesses open. And we received flack for not being on top of it 100%. We don't know where that $250,000 goes. This is tax dollars. Dave mentioned, if you, this is tax dollars. If this was a city department that came and handled it this way, I would be very concerned telling the city manager right now, we need to jump in and take control of this. I'm kind of okay with the deal right now, but the fact that we're going to be getting quarterly reports and that the city manager is going to be on there as well. But I, I don't want to take away the importance of, of marketing Lake Havasu. I, I think it's amazing. I'm in the, the tourism business myself. I think we should be doing it, but we need to be doing it right. And like I said, at the last meeting, I was, I'm one of the, I'm not one of the four that was going to vote yes, so I kind of got talked down to in the meeting. And I, I don't like how any of this has played out. It has not built any confidence in me at all. I'm very concerned. I'm going to be all over the city manager to make sure, we are making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's because this is a big deal. This is tax dollars. And I have a, I, I don't know, I'm even, even with how this has played out. I mean, we're being told it's a good thing. I, I totally agree. The money we spend on tourism is, tourism is very important. We don't know what it takes to market Lake Havasu. Nobody can give us that answer. Why not 3 million? Why not 4 million? At what, at what point is there a saturation? How much did we? I was told that we weren't marketing a lot this, beginning of this year because with COVID, we didn't want people coming to Havasu. But people still came no matter what they did. And it was great. And a lot of the true tourism businesses, yes, the bars had a lot of issues because they were shut down for a while. But no, a lot of the restaurants did good. We did good. A lot of the tourism industry is doing good. I just, I don't know. I just don't like how all this has played out and that we're just supposed to trust. Like I said, if this was a city department, we'd have a problem on our hands. And like I said, we should be spending the money, but we should be spending it right. So I, I just have a lot of concerns, so.
Well, Jim, the, the budget, the books, everything is wide open. Anytime you'd like to look at them, to anyone. And you're welcome at any of our, our board meetings.
And I'm not making, like I said, not accusations in that area. I just, how this has played out, I, I, I just don't, it shouldn't have played out like this over the last month and a half. It does not build confidence in me. And that we back went from 1.9 million to 1.6, why? We, we, well, this is an arbitrary number we're able to pull out, you know? Well, where are we going to cut? How much are we going to cut? How much of marketing is going to be cut? We don't know those. Can we get the numbers? Well, I told you, I gave it to you last time. I'm sorry if the city manager didn't give them to you. Well, then you should come to the meeting. You should have them. We want to know. I, I don't want them tonight after I voted yes or no. I want them, I want to know now, what does it cost to market our city? So like I said, I just, I just have concerns and I, I hope that some of these new changes with quarterly reports and the city manager sitting on the board is, and that like I said, the board too, is, is very active and, and also concerned as, as we are as well. So.
And, and I understand your concerns. So believe me, I sat where you sit and I understand your concerns and I, I appreciate that. But at some point, the residents of this city several years ago thought that these percentages were what, what were needed for.
I agree.
PED and, and Go Lake Havasu. That's where it's all started and that's, that's really what we built our budget on each year is, are those amounts from past years. So it, it really.
I don't argue the importance of it. Like I said, I do, I.
No, I realize you're not.
It's very important that we, we market the city. I just said, I just want to make sure we're doing it right. And like I said, arbitrary numbers is concerning to me.
And I truly feel we are giving, giving you everything that your, your dollars will buy without a doubt. And again, I would welcome you coming to our meetings and, and or sitting down with, with any of us to get those numbers and get those, the contracts that we have with various groups, where we're spending the money. Many of the events that come to town, we actually put dollars into those events and we have all that information for you.
Councilmember Dolan, I hear you're open to 1.9? Is that what I heard? I wasn't really sure.
We can throw a number out, another number out there too. I don't know. I, it's the process and it's making, like I said, our job is to make sure that tax dollars are being spent properly. I am not 100% sure right now in the process of what I've seen. But also, like I said, the fact that we are going from number from 1.9 to we were, it was going to be more without a cap. And then I was okay when it, where there was a cap. But then it was, now we're down to 1.6. And it, like I said, maybe in the future, maybe at next year at this time, maybe we do need to spend more money on it. But more money on specific advertising, maybe not, you know, giving to a, I don't know. Like I said, I'm not the marketing expert. That's why we have Go Lake Havasu. You guys are the marketing experts. I just wish we'd gotten a little more information in, in the area of marketing.
We'll see that you get that.
Okay.
Councilmember Moses?
Yes. My, my whole intent throughout this whole process wasn't to cut the budget or to increase the budget. My intent through this whole process is to figure out what the formula needs to be. What that formula is to get the dollar amount to market Lake Havasu to the point of that inflection point of diminishing returns. When we ask for, you know, what's the return on investment? And we hear, you know, 1 million gets you 93 million. Okay. When does it start getting less? When does it start going down? And that's about where we should be. And when I ask questions like, you know, where's our point of saturation? And I, and I get answers like, well, we could never, never saturate the LA, Las Vegas, Phoenix market. I get that. We can saturate our hotel occupancy and our, and our, and our VRBO occupancy. So when I get answers like that, I feel more like I'm getting answers from a marketing salesman rather than a marketing expert who's looking out for the best interests of the town. I'm not saying that's what this is. I'm just saying, we need the information that proves, that shows us that you guys are the experts and can give us a, a number and a, and a formula to get to that number. And that's what I was hoping would be negotiated between the city manager and, you know, Go Lake Havasu. I too am very kind of disappointed with how this all played out. I was disappointed last month. I was, and then when I saw the contract come before me, I was kind of disappointed too with the last one. So those are my thoughts. I don't really know how we go forward with this as it stands.
Well, I'm, I'm sure we can, we can work a method that will answer your questions. It's, it's not what we've had to do in the past necessarily. I mean, we have justified dollars being spent, but we haven't reached a cap, if you will. And what's, what's a saturation cap for, for our market here? And that's something new that you're asking for that we haven't had to do before. So we, we can appreciate that and.
It's a complex question. I, I get it. And, and I, I would just like some thought to be put towards it.
We can do that. We can certainly do that. And we will work with Mr. Knutson and, and get those, those answers for you for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, so any other comments or questions before we open the public hearing? All right. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, Mr. Brock, if you just make your way to the podium? Oh, get to the microphone first. Yeah, thank you.
Gary Brock, my concern is the same as Mr. Lane's, Mr. Dolan's. And I can't figure out where the money's going as a citizen. And I'm concerned about that. I've been concerned about that since we first moved here. Where's all these dollars going? How do you justify spending it? How much money is being brought back in? Those questions, if I go to, to Mr. Lane and I ask him, he can't answer it because he doesn't have the answers. That's what we need. Nobody's saying that we shouldn't spend the money. And I don't like to see you guys bickering up here, kind of insinuating that he doesn't want you spending the money. He doesn't want you spending the money. We need to spend the money. Yeah, we, everybody knows that. You need to spend the money, but you need accountability. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and the contract does have accountability standards into it that's presented here this evening with us. And as we heard this evening, that the, the books are open. Anyone that has any questions can go and make an appointment at the bureau and, and get that information.
I'd like to be clear that during those meetings, everything is at the forefront because I'm the new liaison to Go Lake Havasu. Not the fore, everything, how it's being spent, we go over the budget monthly. So it, it is, it is being accounted for. I think it just maybe needs to be presented to more people. And I will help with that.
Any other comments or, or feedback from?
Chip Shaloski, presently the vice president there at the Convention Visitors Bureau Board. Didn't want to leave Don Sol here, but I think what we all learned through this whole process and, and don't take it personal, bless you. We definitely don't take it personal. Actually, I took it as a challenge because we found ourself. And Cameron was a, a big part of that. And I appreciate the council appointing. Everybody here is a business owner in some form or another. So we're speaking to the choir. We know that. What we haven't done is a very good job to Mr. Brock, members of the community and you as the council members. We have the info there. A shame of us for not presenting it in whatever fashion you like, quarterly, weekly, monthly, daily. We'll inundate your, your emails daily where you finally put us, do not disturb on there. That's not a problem. But it's our issue. It's not your issue. It's our issues. And we've been given the direction. It's a challenge. If it's 1.6, if it's 1 million, whatever that challenge is, we'll move forward. And you had two members talking earlier where Artie mentions bring Desert Storm back. That Desert Storm is about a $40,000 hit to our, and I shouldn't say hit because it's a great investment and we all know that, to our event sponsorship. It's events and up till 2020, we had 300 plus events that hit this town in some form, fashion or way. And we all know because how many times did you hear or had neighbors or relatives coming? I'm coming in February because I want to go the whole month to the fireworks, the McCulloch Boulevard and all the various events that occur. We know that people. This, but there's a process to that. We market areas heavily hit. Spring break is coming up here again. And you see how we're diligently trying to address that. Who's coming? Who's not going to come? Do we want them to come? I mean, over the courses of MTV moving forward to Lake Havasu presently, what is it that we want to do here? So we listen to board members. We have Cameron now on the board. There's always been a board member. They're a voting board member from the council and we appreciate that. There's also a city employee that's on our board as well. And this one happens to be the airport manager. Always been that. When I was the fire marshal, I was on that board. That's how I became that and become involved in the event. So we have that oversight there. We just did a poor job of, of getting it out to the public, getting it out to you members. So the dollars are there. When you try to compare 1.1 million to the 93 million, you see those same numbers as us. You know what those sales tax because you're just sitting here trying to prove 200,000 plus for police vehicles, 200,000 plus for parks, parks vehicles. We know those numbers. You know those numbers. We just have to work with those numbers now. And the eight employees we have, nobody is, we're going to do everything possible to keep and work within that budget. Those are the marching orders we were given. Frankly, I take it as a challenge and I think we can do a very good job. You won't be disappointed, but you will know that the 1.1 million that we spent in marketing might now be adjusted because do we really need to market Minnesota? Do we really need to market some of these cold hit states? This is the community telling us. It's also in conjunction with other partners, our Hospitality Association. We work very, very close with them. So we know what's coming in, just as PD does on, on events. They know what their occupancy is. They know how to manage the crowds coming in. We do the same thing, but it's all social media, something I honestly do not know. My kids or my granddaughter could probably tell it better, but that is what we do. And social media wise is what gets us out there. How many hits? How many ticks? How many talks? And all the other lingo that goes with it. We know exactly all that stuff. We don't share it. That's all we have to do. You know what comes into your gas station down there. You know exactly what the plates are. Do you need to share it? No. You know monthly what you successfully have done. So we just need to do that and we will promise you, we will do a better job in working with the city manager. I, welcome to come on the board with us. To me, there's nothing to hide. We have 11 board members. We're looking at increasing it. We were up at one point to 15, 18 or something. A previous city manager had asked us to back the numbers on down that maybe we had too many members. What's too many? To me, if you have community members, whether it's Mr. Brock, somebody from the city, somebody from the hospitality, whatever branch they come from, everybody has something to give in this community. I'd like to see us have a little junior like Parks and Rec has, have, have a junior member. Sorry. Kelly, you dinging me? Geez.
She only gave you one bell. She didn't give you two.
I'll wait for the second one. But no, I mean, not to get out, I, I appreciate your support. David, I know everybody here. It's a hard one. And we didn't do a very good job. We will, we promise. There's. We will. We will. Yeah, there's, there's no problem with moving forward here with the challenge that we got. At 1.6 million, we'll deliver. You'll see. And like you, there's challenges for you as well. You have to get creative. Nikki said it very well. She's had to get creative. The Rotary has to get, we all, families have to get creative in what they do and how they do it. So we're no different. And if in fact, at the end of our quarterly reporting, um, we'll, if you want to see it earlier than that, Cameron's your voice person, you know, he, it's up to him to come back to you and give you an update of what to do. And I do believe maybe that's fallen in the cracks at times because Don came from your spot to the board. Cal was on it, you know what I mean? So, and everybody generally with the, the chamber. So we all know what we need to do, people. So, um, I just appreciate the direction and trust. Jim, we will, we will be good stewards of the money because it's my money too. It's Don's money too. And this man has a Dairy Queen restaurant, you know? So trust us, we will do with conjunction with, with the city manager here. We'll get the job done and we will give you everything that you need to, and if it isn't enough, keep telling us. Tell Cameron, follow that. I like to follow the chain, uh, but by all means, we're all open to calls just as you are, so.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Yeah, one question. Would you like us to revisit this in a year or are you comfortable with a three-year contract?
No, I think we need to do because one thing that occurs Nancy is we're marketing next year for upcoming summer and stuff. So everything is so far ahead that we have no base. We can tell you what we did in 19 to get to 20. And 20 being the year it is, um, the challenges that presented us, we're fortunate. Lake Havasu is very, very fortunate. But at the same time, when we talk, we don't have enough hotels, um, or do we have enough hotels? Our visitor's bureau sits in prime property down there for another hotel. We know that. We know at some point we could be tasked with trying to find a visitor's center where in Lake Havasu. And have to relocate that property.
And on the reverse side, it's for taxpayers as well. What if our revenues do drop significantly? Are we going to be, uh, feeling comfortable giving you the 1.6 million if we all got to put our heads together? Who knows? But I, I'm looking to possibly discuss moving it to a one-year contract to revisit it. Other than that, it seems like you guys, um, are all on board to doing the best you can and I appreciate that.
Well, and I appreciate that as well, but you charged us with looking at three years and I think we need to do that, you know? And come back at three years. We went back to Jess. We talked five years at one point. And, and truthfully, how we got here, why it seemed like, how did the board not know? It was one term, VRBO. And that's what brought us back that went, well, wait a minute, that's not on there. Because you can go back in city code and see what brought us to our percentages. A city code that needs to be updated as well. So that's how we got here and it was just a question of, wait, what about this? What about it? And just the way it was phrased just brought us to, wait a minute, timeout here. We can't do this.
And we definitely have our work to do on the VRBOs ourselves. Yes, we do.
No, that's, that's another, but we're marketing all because that's what we've been tasked to do. So. I'm sorry, got a little winded on that and got a little passion, but I appreciate everything that everybody has done there and, um, what we're going to do moving forward.
I, I just wanted to point a clarification because I could potentially see some confusion out there. Is there a difference between what you spend on events and what you, in your marketing budget?
Yes.
Right. So the, the 1.1 million dollars that we spend on marketing is not the same as our event budget?
Totally is not. No, because there's a lot of events out there that feel IGSBA, the fireworks. They're, they're historical events of 30 plus years and they're tight, you know? So what are they going to come? They're going to come to us because, oh, Lake Havasu is enjoying it. So they look to us for sponsorship, but we just don't give 30,000, $40,000 away. There's accountability there. How many heads did you put in those bids? How many people came? How? So there's, there's forms that they have to fill out and some elect not to because it is quite a cumbersome process, you know? So we are good stewards of the money that way. There are some of our top five events that get probably the most money and rightfully so, because they generate a lot of money.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everybody.
Yeah.
And then also, uh, it, it is a very stringent process. I've been through it with an event that I had done in the past. And, and I can assure you that it's not willy nilly. It's not like, hey, sign your name here and we'll give you, cut you a check. It is, uh, very much centered around the economic impact that it's going to have for the city. So I agree with you. Thank you.
And, and we were even changing that process as we speak, moving forward here because of so many moving parts. So. You know, can we do better? Yes. And I think that's what I'm taking back from this is that you're, you're, you know, and any concerns that are out there, because I know everybody's heart is in the right place. That's not even questionable and we don't take it personal that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chip.
And whatever support you give us.
Councilman Lane might actually have a question as well.
Uh, I just, I have a, a statement when they're done.
You what?
Thank you, Chip.
You're welcome.
Did I answer yours?
Yeah.
Kind of babbled on.
I just want to realistically, if we said no to this today, what does that look like? Can our city manager say, I mean, if this wouldn't said no, what does that look like for both Gole Lake Havasu and for the city?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lynn, I, I hope it's more than that. I, I need direction. So where do you want to go with this? So I, and in terms of the, the, not just you individually, obviously, but consensus of council, where do we want to go with this? So I need more than just a, you know, just that. Right now we have, uh, what I've tried to negotiate an agreement that best reflects, does everybody in council agree with this approach? No, but it, it was the best reflection of council as a consensus. Uh, it's, it's also, it's also a contract that the, the Gole Lake Havasu board has, has approved on, on, on their side as well too. So, but with, is that, is that helpful?
I mean, we'll see how the vote goes.
Thank you, Mr. Schloss. We appreciate it. Yes. All right. Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, please. Just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, John Doyle. Nice to meet you all for the first time. I think what Member Lane was getting to at the beginning, if, and I think we kind of got off track on that. And I think I'm understanding where he's coming from is, are we utilizing the money in the best way possible? I don't think anybody here has really questioned that it's not good use of the money and that we can't get accountability in the numbers. But are we doing it in the right process? Because he's saying, oh, we're basing it solely on this tax and a percentage of that tax. Is that the right way? Or should we be basing it on something else where we should be possibly giving more money? Because like you've all said, you know, it's the hotels and the restaurants that are producing a lot of this money. So is it $1 that we're spending and we're getting back a $1.50? Is it worth it? But if we spend a $1.25, are we still only going to get back a $1.50? And we could have used that extra 25 cents to help build back up those restaurants and bars, maybe give grants to them to help support the wear and tear they're having and on some of these older hotels and older businesses that will then turn around and support more tourism to come back in. Because we're going to have better bars and better restaurants. And so I think if I'm hearing everybody right, I don't think anybody's disagreeing on it's good use of money. But are we spending appropriately the money? And are we using the right percentage of the budget where it should be? Or should we be reallocating it to grants and other things that helps tourism other than just marketing ourselves? Because there's a big, marketing and tourism go together, but you know, you, one supports the other and back and forth. So when one, too much marketing and not enough support on the other side to support all that marketing becomes a problem. So then you got to build up the restaurants and the hotels to support the amount you're spending. So maybe it is a back and forth. Maybe we do spend 2 million one year and we spend 1.5 million the next year. And then the other 500 million goes back into the restaurants and the bars to help build back up all the additional tourism we're trying to bring in. Who knows? But I think i- if I'm right, it's a question of, are we figuring out where that money, how much money that is and, and doing that properly? We all agree that it's worth spending, but where is it supposed to be spent? And, uh, the, the process of going about that, I think that's all.
Yeah, thank you for, for your comments. And just quickly, we cannot invest in private business like that. So there's, there's gift clauses and things that preclude tax dollars to be used for that type of a scenario. But, um, all right. Any other comments, questions about this during the public hearing? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Callahan, do you have a?
Just, just a comment that you heard from Chip was probably the most familiar person in our city with the events that have gone on in the past. And, uh, knows what their, their value is really worth, uh, and, and what we spend on those events. So Chip is an invaluable, uh, member of our board and, and individual for the city too. So his comments carry a lot of weight. So, thank you much. We appreciate anything you'll do for us. So we will get back to you with information on a more regular basis and keep it, uh, more totally, so you can understand totally what's going on. So, thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Callahan. All right. Bring it back to, uh, council for, uh, motion or discussion.
I have a comment.
Mayor?
Councilman Lane?
Yeah. Uh, first off, once again, I wanted to thank, uh, the board, uh, for being here and their comments. I wish we could have had that, this conversation and, and what you are saying that you can do six months ago or 30 days ago. For me, it's, we're here to vote on whether or not we're going to approve a 1.6 million dollar contract. And what we're hearing is, well, this is what we're going to do, when to me, it's something that should have already been, been done. And so for me, in, in good conscience, I, I, I just, for direction, you know, we have to give direction to the city manager. Uh, I would suggest that this gets, gets opened up to the public. And have a process where people can bid on it. And I can't help but wonder, uh, what a bid would be through an RFP process from Gole Lake Havasu. Uh, and whether or not they would win, uh, the bid or if other agencies would come through. Just because, like I said, I wish we would have had this conversation. We could have had these things come forward six months ago or a year ago. Not on the night that we're actually voting for this. But so in good conscience, I'm not going to be able to, to, to vote for this contract. I would give, uh, direction to the city manager to open it up, but I'll let the council talk.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Campbell, did you, no? All right. So what, uh, we're here to, to do tonight is, uh, the people's business. And, uh, tourism promotion, um, is one of those things that the city is charged with. We've now, um, had this discussion, uh, in, in two public hearings. We've tabled it once. The Board of Directors from Gole Lake Havasu, we've heard from, uh, they are, they can make it work with 1.6 million dollars. Uh, there's additional oversights that, uh, have always been available to us. But now obviously seems to, to have a focus of, of members of this council that they'll be able to get access to. Um, and we can review it. There are protections within, uh, this contract that, um, it can be terminated if, um, if we don't feel that the items are being contractually handled. And, uh, you know, it's time for, for us to do, uh, uh, the people's business. I don't like the, the way it went down. I don't like the fixed contract, but I will be voting, um, in favor of it, uh, so that we can get this issue behind us, uh, get them back to work and then we can, uh, address how we do it, uh, in the future, uh, going forward. So, uh, any other comments, questions before we entertain motions? All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I motion. I motion to move to approve the funding agreement with Gole Lake Havasu for the promotion of tourism on behalf of the city.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell and a second from Vice Mayor Coke. Um, any further discussion? All right. We're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to three.
Excellent. Uh, thank you. And, uh, we're ready to get you back to work and, and promoting tourism. So thank you. Uh, moving on to item nine, any, uh, current events, any council committee reports? No? All right. Moving on to item 10, future, uh, meetings. Our next, uh, meeting will be on Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 at 6:00 PM. It'll be a regular meeting. Yes. Uh, we also will have on Wednesday, March 31st, 2021 at 9:00 AM will be a work session. Uh, it'll be part of our, uh, budget discussion. It'll be our first work session on that. And then on, uh, Tuesday, April 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM, we will also have a regular meeting. Are there any, uh, future discussion items?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, we seem to be talking about Airbnbs a lot and we educate the people that it's a state issue, not a city issue. And our hands are kind of tied. I was thinking maybe we could invite, um, our state representatives to maybe come and give us an update on what they're doing to, um, bring control of Airbnbs back to our city. Um, I know they're very much a fan of local control, so I just would like to maybe we can get an update on how, how that's going and how they're fighting for us in that area. Maybe we can extend an invitation to them.
Sure. Would you be, um, open to possibly, um, having, uh, they're in the thick of the legislative session right now. So it's difficult for, uh, them to get here, but maybe at close of session, we can, uh, include it in a wrap up of the legislative priorities. Maybe with, um, Brian Tassinari and, um, and our delegation, uh, to give us a, a complete legislative update. Um, and maybe what the future holds, uh, for that bill, um, um, into the future. Cause it's still moving right now. It's, it's moving rapidly, but would that suffice for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, any other future discussion items? All right. Uh, moving on to item 12, entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. We, and we have a second. Everyone be kind. Thank you for joining us this evening. We'll see you soon.